Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out on this snowy April 7th. I do want to start by acknowledging that it's our council president's birthday today. Happy birthday, Shannon. I won't say how many years because that'll just make everybody feel old. So as I just said, there will be an opportunity to provide public testimony. Each speaker is, and Nancy Sully has those speaker slips. Each speaker is limited to three minutes per council rules. Please fill out the speaker slip and then in the event that we still have speakers at the end of the hearing, please connect for follow-up, please connect directly with city staff at the welcome table. Meaning, sorry, breaking that down a little more, if you've realized you wanted to speak after the presentations, you can see city staff at the welcome table. So, welcome to our East Side Capitol Budget Hearing. The 2018 Capitol Budget is about approximately $1 billion. 720 million in new funding, 294 million in carryover dollars. This includes a record amount of funding for street repaving, which at $39 million. Water and sewer improvements make up 55% of the budget. That's $557 million. The planning areas that we are covering with today's hearing, so you'll hear presentations that are unique to your areas, there will be some content that applies to the city overall, that we know all planning areas are interested in, so we'll include that. But also, we want to focus in on what's unique to your neighborhoods. Those planning areas are Northeast, Near East, Eastmore, Walnut Ridge, Far East, Eastland Bryce, and Southeast. And we do have maps. We have a map over there, so you know for sure, but I think you're all clued in. And if you are here and are interested in another area, we do have three additional finance Capitol Budget hearings coming up. One on Tuesday, April 10th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Marion Franklin Community Center. One on Wednesday, April 11th, from 6:30 to 8 at Glenwood Community Center. And our final one on Saturday, April 14th, at Linden Community Center. Our target date for introduction to city council of this Capitol Budget is Monday, April 16th for first reading, and Monday, April 23rd for second reading. Throughout this process, you can, as always, feel free to reach directly out to your council offices, all seven of us, with concerns, or priorities, or additional questions. And with that, I would like to acknowledge the council members who are here. As I already said, the birthday boy. We also have Councilmember Emmanuel Remy and Councilmember Michael Stenziano. Thank you so much. And I will kick things off by deferring to our, the wonderful Dan Gianardella, who is Deputy Director of the Department of Finance and Management, and knows this budget inside and out, and will be providing some introductory remarks. And then I will introduce each representative from each department who has additional remarks on their budget sections.
Thank you, Chair Brown. President Harden, members of council, community members, first of all, thank you for having this meeting in your community. I think this is the first time I can recall that we actually came to you to talk about capital projects in this manner, as we're proposing to adopt the 2018 Capitol Budget and the, actually also, along with this, it's maybe a little more understated, we also adopt a capital plan as part of this as well. Sometimes you're here referred to as the CIP. That is a six-year capital plan that's adopted along with this. The first year, of course, being the 2018 proposed Capitol Budget, and then the following five years. So, thank you for having us here. I also want to thank my colleagues in the city departments, including those that are with me here today. This is always an integral process, takes some time to put this together. You know, we start roughly in January of each year, and then hopefully it takes this collaborative effort to get this passed. So I want to thank them. I also want to thank members of the Finance and Management Staff, Rob Newman, Kyle Saverheart, Stu Stahl, who do a lot of the number crunching and put together many of these boards and displays that you see here. So I want to thank them for all their hard work as well. I think also, we want to thank the voters of Columbus, first of all, for the 2016 bond package that many of you probably voted on. We can't do this without your help and support. And by coming to you, as we did in 2016, and I think we've done this historically about every four or five years, the voters of Columbus approve these bond packages that enables us to go out and eventually issue bonds at a very good market interest rate. So by the public backing those, you save us hundreds of millions of dollars over the years of these plans. So we thank you for that. And I think also, we'd be remiss if we didn't thank the policymakers of 50 years ago that came up with this idea of setting aside funds to enable us to have these capital projects. Columbus is somewhat unique in that we set aside a quarter of the 2.5% income tax each year to help us pay bond debt, which supports many of these programs that we do. So while oftentimes you'll see other cities struggle with infrastructure improvements and how they fund those, Columbus has done a good job, and the voters have helped us immensely by approving these bond packages, enabling us to have these robust plans. So, thank you for that. Again, just a slight difference, we are here to talk about the Capitol Budget, but as I said, we'll also approve a six-year plan. The budget, as Chair Brown mentioned, is about $1 billion. But over the six-year plan, we're looking at probably around $3 billion, and hopefully, depending on income tax receipts, potentially more than that. That's something we look at each year when we look at adopting the Capitol Budget. So this is a very robust plan, and one that, as you'll see, goes a long way to supporting the wonderful things that we're able to do in the community. We also keep in mind that it's one thing to adopt this budget, but we have to have the cash to do these projects. So usually each year, there'll be a bond sale. That is something we do in conjunction with the city auditor, in issuing of debt to actually support these programs. And typically, you know, we do that somewhere from four to seven months following the adoption of the Capitol Budget. So while there's no firm date on that yet, we typically will do those in late summer or early fall. The timing and the issuance and size of those bond issuance typically depend on several factors. The economy and what is happening with that, interest rates that are out there, and obviously the city's ability to make sure we fund those in an equitable manner. So there are a couple of factors that are involved in that. The proposed budget, as Chair Brown mentioned, is roughly $1 billion. That supports Mayor Ginter's goals of neighborhoods, 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 which is a very appropriate theme for this budget. Again, new funding roughly $720 million. There is some carryover funds of roughly 294 million. And a large percentage of this, certainly over half, is for utilities and infrastructure improvements. I think, as the mayor said, you know, the underground stuff, the hidden away stuff that we don't see, but is very important to us, water and sewer lines, plant work, those things that we use every day, but we don't often think about how that is accomplished and the expense that goes into that. You will hear, and as you heard already, and you'll continue to hear, about some significant neighborhood improvements. We're very pleased about the investment in street resurfacing. As has been mentioned, that is probably the most ever in the city's history. And with the little more snow we got this year, and the cold and warm weather causes a lot of potholes in streets, need servicing, as you know, if you've been driving around. So we're very happy about that. Affordable housing continues to be an issue. You'll hear some about that today. There's at least $5 million in this budget to support affordable housing in Columbus. Recreation parks, we'll be able to tell you about what they're going to do with recreation centers, and most notably, for at least the Linden area, roughly $20 million for a new rec center that's been talked about there. But other improvements that they're doing, whether it's HVAC, upkeep, playground improvements will be done in this Capitol Budget. Pedestrian safety, whether it's sidewalks, or biteways, or streetlights, there's, I think, combined over $10 million within this budget to support those things. Fire and police substations, safety gets a lot of press when it comes to the operating budget, given that 70% of the operating budget goes to safety, but they are also part of this bond effort as well. You'll hear about police and fire station, substation improvements, combined over $10 million. Firefighters can't respond to fires and EMS runs without the equipment. Fire apparatus is funded out of this budget, along with refuse collection equipment, that one service that many of us see every week, to take our refuse away. So combined, $13.5 million for that equipment. And then several hundred million dollars, as I mentioned, in infrastructure improvements dealing with public utilities. As far as the Finance and Management Department, the department that I represent, we have actually a rather small portion of capital funding. Most of our funding is basically for city facilities that we support through general fund divisions. We are looking at roughly a request of about $12.3 million in new funding for improvements to city facilities. Some of that, mostly, actually mostly dealing with two areas. City Hall improvements, City Hall is a 90-year-old building that needs a lot of TLC, and we're looking to upgrade the fire suppression system there. It's about $750,000. And then we have general City Hall improvements, usually dealing with HVAC, exterior and interior lighting, elevator modernizations, restroom upgrades, roof repairs, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $2.6 million for those renovations. And then other city facilities that we're typically responsible for, and some of that could be the West Side Health Center, where we're doing a parking lot expansion, the Hammond Center on 1111 East Broad Street for elevator upgrades. And typically, we set aside some money for any unexpected repairs. We have over 100 buildings that we are responsible for. As I said, some of those are many years old, and while the city's done a good job of upgrading and building new facilities, we still need to take care of the ones that are out there. So we have about $2.8 million set aside for those type of improvements as well. Our municipal court building is approaching 40 years old. That building gets a lot of use downtown, and we are looking potentially for maybe some land and potentially design to look at the feasibility of a new structure for them. So we've set aside about $6 million in total for the potential ability to be able to fund a new municipal court building. Again, we have a ways to go if we're able to accomplish that. A new building would be tens of millions of dollars. But in the meantime, we've got to upkeep the building that we have down there, so there are some money set aside for that as well. One division that is also underneath the purview of the Finance and Management Department is the Fleet Management Division, who repairs all the roughly 5,000 pieces of rolling stock in the city of Columbus, and they have a small $400,000 investment that they do for their fuel tank management, underground fuel tanks, which we typically now are going about taking out of the ground. They still have several dozen fuel sites where they drop fuel, and we are looking to upgrade and renovate those and turn those into up-ground fueling sites and consolidating some of those. Finally, the Department of Technology, which again is sort of one of those interest service agencies in the city, they have about $8 million in capital funds that they are requesting, and most of this is for technology improvements, server equipment, data platforms, telephone equipment, software, and most of this is for citywide support. So they have a small part of this as well. As I said, the entirety of this, mayor's proposed Capitol Budget and then the plan from 2018 to 2023, I would just like to mention, is online. So if, I know a lot of you are here today to talk about what's going to happen on the East Side, but if you want to see the entirety of the budget and the entirety of the plan, you can get that at columbus.gov/capital. Again, that's columbus.gov/capital. That is online out there. And keep in mind, obviously, this is what's being proposed, and hopefully, we'll be formally presenting this to council at the conclusion of these hearings. This is the first of those. And I'd be able, hopefully, at some point, to answer any questions you may have about the overall budget and Finance and Management's role in that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director Gianardella. I want to give an opportunity for council members to ask any questions of finance before moving on to the next. All right. Next, we have Mr. John Lee, Assistant Director of the Department of Public Utilities.
Members of council and members of the community, my name is John Lee, Assistant Director of the Department of Public Utilities. As Dan mentioned, the Department of Public Utilities has a very large capital improvement budget, as well as a large six-year capital improvement plan. For 2018, we have a total of $557 million in new funding planned. And we have, of that, that would break down to $434 million in new funding and $122 million in carryover funding. So as you know, we serve almost 1.2 million customers in the city of Columbus, in the surrounding communities, as well as county customers. And so, our dollars to do these projects, as Dan mentioned, are from bond funds, and we also get a lot of funding from the Ohio EPA. The repayment stream for those dollars is the rate dollars, rate payer funds, that you all pay with your utility bills. So we're very aware of that, and we try to keep the rates as low as possible. We also have a lot of regulations that we have to comply with through the EPA. So, over the next six years, you know, I think Dan had mentioned, there's about $3 billion allocated in projects. Of that, we have 2.3 billion of those dollars. And when you break that down, approximately 34% of that goes towards water line work and water treatment work over at our plants. We have three water plants throughout the community that serve customers. And the biggest share is sewer work. And we are currently under some requirements to the EPA to complete major upgrades to our sewer system, as is other communities and cities throughout the state of Ohio and the country as well. So we're not alone. And then a smaller portion, about 6%, goes towards stormwater improvements and streetlight and circuit upgrades. Some of you may be in our service area for the Division of Power, so you may have Columbus Power, or you might have AEP. So, in the East area, today, I wanted to talk just about a few projects that may be down in your neighborhood, along your street. I wanted to talk about some water line projects that we have going on, and some streetlight projects. I've got a whole list of projects, if you'd like to see them, I can show you the breakdown of the $190 million over the next six years. What's coming up here in the short term is a lot of water line work. There's going to be, particularly in the Eastmore Walnut Ridge planning area, we've got about eight water line projects that are going to be going into construction in 2018. And those are along Scottwood Avenue, No Bixby, Dundee Avenue, Southampton, South Wyant, and Main Street, and some Broad Street and No Bixby. So, a lot of projects, a lot of water line work. The impact to you would probably be very minimal. There might be a short-term time where the water is turned off, but that won't be very long. There could be some, you know, lane closures or something like that to guide traffic and pedestrian traffic as well. So, one of the projects that I wanted to mention was the Dundee Avenue area water line. I think that's close by to the community center here. That's a $3.1 million project, which is fairly sizable. And that project, the construction, is going to happen in September of this year, 2018. So it's going to last about one year, that's typically how long it lasts. And so they're going to go in, and they're going to upgrade the infrastructure. These could be six-inch to eight-inch water lines. You know, over time, those degrade. What we do at Public Utilities is, we model these water lines. We look at the, we track the amount of breaks that are happening. You know, whenever you see water bubbling up on the streets, that's because there's a break going on under there. So we see a lot of that in the communities, and we're going to flag that, and then we use modeling to try to determine which, how to prioritize those major projects. So, we're going, and I have maps of all of this for you, if you'd like to see if your streets are actually part of that. So when I say Dundee Avenue, that's the area, Dundee Avenue area water line. So multiple streets will actually be upgraded as part of that project. Just a few would be East Livingston Avenue, there's going to be a section of East Livingston Avenue that's going to have some upgrades, Wilton Drive, Clyde Drive, and Dundee Avenue as well. Another project we have, that's going to be in the engineering phase in 2018, because we have to engineer the project, then we go into construction, will be the Greenway Avenue area water line project. Design costs are about $250,000, so the 2018 CIB will provide those dollars. And then, that will occur throughout 2018, and construction costs are estimated at $2.7 million. And so, that construction probably won't happen until 2020. So that's another large project that's going to install about 8,000 line feet of new water line, and those will be installed north of Broad Street, along Greenway Avenue, Woodward Avenue, Parkwood Avenue, East Fifth Avenue, and North Broadley Road. Three street lighting projects I wanted to talk about that are in the area, that may be of interest to you, are the East Main Decorative Lighting Project, the Broad Street and No Bixby Street Lighting Project, and the Oak and 18th Decorative Lighting Project. And with our street lighting projects, we have, as I mentioned, we have a service area, and we have a responsibility to provide streetlights to the members of the community. And so, we have to prioritize those street lighting projects based on our available funding. So we work with community members, we work with the Department of Development, who works with the community through the Urban Infrastructure Fund, to find out which projects are important to members of the community. A lot of times, we, in most cases, we install wood poles, and we're moving to LED lighting. So you'll see more LED lighting around the community, as opposed to the high-pressure sodium. The LED lighting lasts longer. In some cases, these bulbs can last 20 years. And so, it's, and it costs less to power those. The other option for community members, if you don't like the wooden poles with the Cobra headlights, is we do have a program for decorative poles that, there's an assessment process that you can go through, where you would gather members of your area for, gather a petition together, and there's various steps to go through. You have to go through city council, and that's all laid out on our website, and I'd be happy to talk to you about that if there's interest there. The one project that I wanted to mention was the East Main. This is the, part of the Urban Infrastructure Renewal Fund project program, and this will install LED lighting in the Eastmore Walnut Ridge planning area. And what we're going to be doing is installing some LED lighting, decorative lighting along East Main Street from South Gould Road, that's near Bexley, to Barnett Road, that's near Whitehall. And so, right now, they actually have overhead lighting, but we're actually going to take that down and put in some decorative lighting. And it's going to be LED, so it's going to enhance the aesthetics of the area. It's a fairly large project, and that's going to happen in 2018. It's going to be a $866,000 project, start in 18, October of 18, and run through September of 2019. Another street lighting project along Broad Street and No Bixby. This will, this is an area, as you know, is outside of I-270, the Outer Belt area. I think it's unlit at this point. There's no, this section that we're talking about is unlit. So we're actually going to design that this year. So this Capitol Improvement Budget includes $50,000 for design, and we, the construction dollars are about $225,000, and that will be in 2020. So we'll install probably 50 to 60 lights along the stretches of that project. And as I mentioned, you know, the way we prioritize these street lighting projects is citizen requests, we look at public safety concerns, we look at activity in the area, how much, you know, how many houses, residential, is it commercial? We look at if there's been any kind of pedestrian incidents, vehicle crashes, and population density. So all that kind of goes into our formula. The final project I'll mention today is, it's a very, it's kind of a small project near Oak and 18th. And if you know that area, it's in the Old Town East area, it's a little farther west from here. What we're going to do there is, we're going to remove the overhead lighting, and we're going to install some LED post-top poles. So they're kind of like a decorative type of pole. They will be LED, and that project will go to construction in 2018 at a cost of $128,000. And that would probably last till about April of 2019. So that's the project that I wanted to highlight today for members of the community. Again, I have maps available here. I have details on all the projects. If you'd like to see what we have, not only in 18, but all the way out to 2023, isolated by planning area, I have detailed maps of the Dundee Avenue water line. So if you want to see which, if you live in this area, which streets are going to be impacted, and which are going to be upgraded, as well as the Greenway, the Greenway Avenue area water line project. So, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Assistant Director Lee. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Michael Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Lee, good to see you all the way down there. You always know how to excite people with a budget description. Really quickly, you mentioned in the beginning, carryover. Could you describe what carryover funding is?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. Carryover funding is the money that we received in bond sales from prior years that is in our budget and allocated towards projects, we just haven't gotten around to spending it yet. So it may be something that we had planned on spending, we received money for in the bond sale, and for whatever reason, there could be a potential project delay, things of that nature. And so we're just basically re-appropriating those dollars to be spent in 2018.
That's reflective of the general process of design, construction, and just how long that can take, right?
Correct. With any type of project, you know, utility projects and likely with other departments, you know, we set a schedule, and sometimes, particularly with the right-of-way, that often is a situation that kind of takes a little bit longer than we always plan for, securing, you know, all the areas to actually get in there and do the project. Sometimes there may be a minor design delay. So, those types of fluctuations are kind of built into that carryover.
Thank you. Did you have one?
I just wanted to, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to recognize our CLO officer, Mr. James Poole is here. Thank you so much for being out here. A lot of folks in the community know him, and I just wanted to say thank you for participating today.
Thank you, Council President. And before moving on from utilities, just want to remind everyone that water and sewer improvements, as I said at the beginning, make up 55% of the budget. So that's $557 million. And as Mr. Lee said, a lot of that, is 100% of that supported by the fees essentially? That we, that the city... that we, that the city charges for water and sewer? Or is just a majority of it?
I would say probably about 99% of it is funded from water and sewer fees paid by businesses and residents. There is a very small portion, particularly for power, that we receive some dollars from the general fund. So that's the only area, division of power, so.
Thank you. So that goes to show that a majority of the capital budget is, goes to water and sewer and is supported by the fees that are paid into utilities. And then as Mr. Gian Guardella talked about, the fact that voters have approved this quarter set aside from the income tax, that goes to support the rest of the projects in our budget. And that's really on an annual basis how you see the funding amounts put together. Thank you. Next, we have the Department of Public Service. So I will turn it over to Assistant Director, Mr. Jeff Ortega.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Brown, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and members of city council and members of the community. My name is Assistant Director Jeff Ortega of the Department of Public Service, appearing here on behalf of Director Jennifer Gallagher. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about the Department of Public Service's proposed 2018 capital budget. This proposed capital budget for DPS is approximately $160 million. That will invest in roadways, sidewalks, bikeways, bridges, and other projects that will improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods, making them safer for motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists all throughout the city and even here, especially here on the west, on the east side. The centerpiece of the Public Service's proposed capital budget is $39 billion, as Dan mentioned, for the city's resurfacing program. That's a record amount that will, people will see in their roadways all throughout the city, and even right here on the east side. Of that $39 million, $29.4 million will go to resurface more than 200 streets throughout the city of Columbus. That includes Stelza Road from the railroad bridge to Seventeenth Avenue, Cassidy Avenue from the railroad tracks to Fifth Avenue, and many residential roads here throughout this part of the city. I've got some maps here, which I could share with you afterwards if you'd like to see some more detail. About $1.5 million will improve approximately 26 miles of alleys across the city, including many in this part of the city. Another $2 million of the resurfacing program will provide for citywide curb ramps. And another $1.3 million approximately will be for the urban paving projects program, which are joint resurfacing projects with ODOT. Included within the 2018 capital improvements budget are other major roadway improvements, such as, and I'll just, I have a few of them here I want to mention. Arterial Street rehabilitation, which is Hamilton Road from I-70 to Refugee Road. This project is funded at about $3.3 million in this proposed budget, and will upgrade Hamilton Road, the Hamilton Road corridor from I-70 to Refugee Road by providing what we're calling complete street facilities, as well as access management improvements. This also includes 6,750 feet of shared use path on the west side of the roadway and about 6,000 feet of sidewalk on the east side. Also wanted to mention the intersection improvements at Main Street and McNaulson Road. This project is funded at about $1.2 million in this proposed budget. And will make improvements to the intersection of Main Street and McNaulson Road. That will provide additional capacity and provide safety for motorists and pedestrians. This project will also widen for an eastbound right turn lane on East, on Main Street, and reconstruct the traffic signal and deal with some of the timing issues there. Construction on that project is expected to start in early 2019. Also wanted to mention James Road and Livingston Avenue. This is funded in this proposed budget at about $560,000. It'll start construction in 2019. But it will encompass safety improvements at the intersection, such as widening for turn lanes and the reconstruction of traffic signals. It'll also include sidewalks and curb ramp improvements for pedestrians. This is one of the projects that is partially funded by the state at about $2.3 million. So the total construction cost will be just shy of $3 million. Also, in this year's budget, the department proposes the investment of $6.5 million for the city's pedestrian safety, sidewalks, and bikeways program. This includes $2.5 million dedicated to building sidewalks around Columbus schools, including Independence High School. And want to thank Columbus City Council for their leadership in making that a priority as well. Also wanted to mention that this proposed budget includes about $80,000 to design sidewalks on the south side of Toronto Street, from Trevitt Street to North Champion Avenue. Once constructed in 2020, this project will add about 600 linear feet of sidewalks to the south side of Toronto. Finally, in our 2018 capital budget, we propose investing $3.3 million to improve city-owned bridges, including $500,000 for the Centennial Drive culvert replacement near Independence Village. The department also plans to use an existing contract this year to design the replacement of an existing bridge over an unnamed stream in that area to George's Creek. This structure will consist of new concrete beams, a composite deck, and a three-lane section plus paved shoulders and a sidewalk on both sides. Lehman Road will be resurfaced and widened to accommodate the new configuration. And construction on this project is expected to happen in 2020. As you may know, the Department of Public Service is responsible for maintaining and approving 223 bridges owned by the city and an additional 118 bridges that the city provides maintenance for with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Again, that's just a brief overview. I've got some detailed maps on the resurfacing. If you'd like to see some of those after we finish here. Chair Brown, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and members, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Are there questions from my colleagues about service? Councilmember Remy?
Thanks. Jeff, could you talk a little bit? I know you touched on it briefly in your message. But just talk about, you know, some of the things that we announced this year. It doesn't mean that you're going to see concrete being poured for maybe one to two years after that. So these lists that you have that you're going to be, make available, which we will also publish out to the public. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, whether or not there's significant right-of-way acquisition and how that frames up the timing on the announcements we make this year?
Chair Brown, Chairman Remy, and members, thanks for that question. Yes, some of the dollars in these projects are for design. That takes a certain period of time. Also, there is right-of-way acquisition, which is acquiring, you know, land for purposes of, you know, building roads and sidewalks and things of this sort. That can also be an additional amount of time. So certainly, there are many of the projects in here are, have construction dollars, which will be at some point this year. But to the member's point, there are with some of these projects, some lack time because of those different things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And next, I'd like to move on to the Department of Public Safety Assistant Director, Mr. Robert Stewart.
Thank you to Councilmember Brown, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and President, or Councilmember Remy. My name is Bob Stewart, Assistant Safety Director at Public Safety. As I sit here shaking, because it's the first time I've ever done this, I hope to be able to answer any questions you might have and at least present the information I have for you in an adequate manner. Deputy Director Gian Guardella gave an excellent presentation of the general assessment and general approach to the funding for the citywide projects, and specifically police and fire, public safety. Public Safety Division proposed 2018 capital improvement budget is focused on the mayor and council's priorities for protecting city neighborhoods by building new police and fire facilities, purchasing fire equipment, medics, ladders, and upgrading police and communication projects, or communications and equipment. In 2018, the Public Safety capital budget proposed 26.6 million in new funding. This funding can be broken down into four general areas. New police and fire facilities, fire apparatus replacement, communications and technology improvement, and safety facility improvements also. We'll start with fire station and police substation design. $7 million has been set aside to purchase and build a new Fire Station 16 in Linden area. The Fire Station 16 currently located on East Weber Road was first built, was originally built in 1953. Due to changes in fire equipment sizes, procedures, and staffing, this facility is no longer sufficient to carry on the size of the equipment that needs to be placed there. So we're moving on to a new facility. The new site will be, purchased, new site purchase is going to 1465 Oakland Park Avenue, and is at an adequate size to accommodate construction for a modern police EMS facility served North Linden. $3 million has also been allocated and set aside to purchase equip, or land for two police substations, Police Substation 8 and 16. They're currently housed together at 333 West Town Street in Franklinton. And this surprised even me, and I've even worked out of there in the past. But this facility was first built in 1870. It is in critical need for replacement due to age and deteriorating condition. In addition to this year's funding for police substation fire stations, the city is in contract to purchase the, or to build the new Fire Station 35 on Wagner Road. There's a picture of that proposed facility over, and the first that's aligned over with the easels there. And that will, they should, I'm understanding we're looking to break ground before the end of the year in that facility. We're also looking to purchase or start building a new police substation number one on Sankas Road. Again, that is, would be much closer to that number one precinct area, in the Polaris area. That area's grown commercially and residential, residential, amount of residential improvement. The closest police substation is over a mile away at Carl and Morris Road. So we need to have a fire, a police substation much closer to that area. The next phase would be police, or fire apparat, apparatus. The department is proposing 7.5 million in new funding to purchase police, or fire apparatus. In 2008, a fire replacement standard was established and adopted by the city and the Division of Fire. The apparatus is pictured in the placard on the side, or the types of apparatus that we'll be purchasing. Medics, fire engines, file ladders, heavy rescues, those types of equipment. I have a list here of the types of equipment that, or type of replacements that need to be done for Eastmore and the Walnut Ridge area. We're purchasing a new medic. Fire Stations 35, 23, 20, and 21, these are all over the city, including out east. We have to have types of improvements, such as replacing generators, sealing and striping of roadways and driveways. This equipment, as you can about imagine, is very heavy. And that constant pounding and movement of the, on the concrete and asphalt as they're coming and going from these fire stations causes some damage, and they need to be replaced. So those, the money's been set aside to take care of that. Police and fire renovations. $3 million has been set aside for the renovations and continued improvement for police facilities, such as the police crime lab, police property room, Fire Stations 2 and Fire Stations 3, for example, which remain to have significant needs for upgrading and for their parking and for generators and replacement of windows and roof repairs and things of that nature. These buildings, as you can imagine, are in constant use. They're not like your homes where, yeah, you live there all the time, but they're constantly used. The shifts change every 24 hours. And so just, you can imagine opening and closing doors and raising and lowering garage doors that have equipment coming and going. It does take its toll on those type of buildings. So those are the types of repairs that we'll be making on the existing facilities. Communications and technology improvements for the 911 system. We're looking at 2.5 million to upgrade the existing 911 system and $500,000 to replace police and fire radios that are aging. One component that is being proposed is a gunfire detection system, which will enable police to receive real-time alert, alert of gunfire and no longer totally dependent on 911 notification. When this is over, if you'd like to, we can talk about what I limited knowledge I have about this system. But basically, as soon as a round is fired, the system detects it, notifies a central location, and then that location comes back to the police department within a very short period of time, like 45 seconds, with an exact location of where that round was fired. If you can imagine, and I'm sure some of you have, because I've talked to you before about this random gunfire types of runs. You'll hear gunfire, you'll call 911. The police will receive that roll, that run, and they'll canvass an area looking for it. You, as a caller, may never see that cruiser unless you know exactly where that gunfire was fired. It may sound like it's a couple of streets over. So cruiser will come and drive around an area looking for that exchange, or discharged firearm. But this will allow us to know exactly where that round was fired. So you'll get a much better, much quicker, and much more detailed response to runs like that. So we're looking at that component. It's not, it's just something new to Columbus. We don't have it before, and we're looking at proposed, this proposal. We're also looking at a million-dollar commitment to perhaps designing a fire, a driving track for public safety. It would be used by police and fire, also to train their prospective recruits and in-service personnel on how to drive the equipment in a specific manner. They'll set up driving tracks and driving paths and to allow them to learn basically how to operate this equipment better. If you know how to drive, as you can, you'll remember back how difficult it was to learn how to drive your car when you were learning. I've got an 18-year-old that found out you have to give a little more room to the garage when you pull in. But it'll teach you how to drive that car, so, or that fire truck or that ladder. So it's a project that we need to have. So with all of that, again, this is a very general assessment of the projects and the proposals that are being presented. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have, the best I can.
Thank you so much, Assistant Director Stewart. And thank you for the explanation about the shot spotter system.
It's a very general. Yeah, it's something that lets you know specifically where a round has been fired.
And the million dollars that's in this year's budget for it, can you explain what that actually, because I know that it doesn't fund the whole system all over the city, and we are needing to look at whether it will be effective for us. But knowing that 80% of shots are unreported, you know, we think it could help us. Can you dig a little bit deeper into what this first investment does?
What this first investment is, number one, we have to find exactly how the programs work. There are a number of companies out there that allocate, that have a shot spotting system or a gunfire detection system. We, we're finding out exactly, ourselves exactly how it works. The amount of room that it will cover, will it cover a square mile? Would it cover half a square mile? We don't actually know. But we're looking to fund that type of program in an area that's to be selected, after the company is selected, I suppose, to determine exactly how this system will work. I know, I've got a background in law enforcement, and I know that there are cities, Cincinnati's got one, Chicago's got one, and they're allocating, they're thinking or finding that these programs, the system is responsible for a reduction in gunfire in certain areas. Again, the overall area it'll cover, I don't know. We'll find out. But even though it's going to cost a million dollars to look into this and hopefully bring it into the city, we won't know exactly until it gets here exactly how much area it will cover or where it'll go.
Thank you so much. Are there questions from my colleagues? Are there questions from my colleagues versus the Director Stewart? Okay. Next, we have Deputy Director of the Department of Development, Ms. Hannah Jones.
Good morning. Thank you very much Chair Brown, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano and members of council for joining us this morning. The Development Department utilizes capital funding to support our mission and programs that exist throughout the city of Columbus with the goal of leveraging private investment to create and retain jobs and grow neighborhoods throughout our city. Projects that are funded through our capital improvement budget include the development of affordable housing within our various neighborhoods, initiating public-private partnerships to encourage commercial growth throughout the region, the demolition of vacant and abandoned housing, as well as the renovation and preservation of residential housing throughout the city. We also focus on the construction of major roadway infrastructure that supports economic development projects. Our twenty eighteen capital improvement budget requested is fifty-seven point one million. This includes nearly fourteen million that's focused on community development initiatives and forty-three point two million that is focused on economic development and job creation. For our community development initiatives, we have proposed the following. Approximately five million will go to support the Housing Alliance as we look to leverage funding in the private sector as well as regional for programs and projects that will help us address the affordable housing concerns within the county. Three point five million will support our vacant and abandoned properties efforts. This funding is used for various, for various work, sorry, associated with the demolition of structures. This can include environmental asbestos testing and abatement, as well as demolition, lot restoration and similar services. So in some cases, the stabilization of structures that can be restored and then sold. Last year, we demolished two hundred and ninety-nine vacant structures and since twenty twelve, we have demolished approximately nine hundred and forty-five structures throughout the city. Two point three million will be used to complete the final phase of roadway construction to support the redevelopment of Poindexter Village on the east side. Two million will go to our housing preservation work throughout the city, which is focused on increasing the local supply of decent, safe and sanitary housing and decrease the number of vacant properties. Last year, we were able to rehab and repair more than a thousand homes throughout our community. And then eight hundred thousand is set aside for right-of-way improvements that go to support some of the housing projects throughout our city. Lastly, three hundred and fifty thousand is set aside for emergency shelter repair. This is focused on assisting our emergency shelters when they have repairs that are needed to help them better serve our homeless individuals and families. They can include ADA bathroom improvements, roof replacements, kitchen improvements and those types of minor repairs. For our economic development and job creation initiatives, we are proposing the following. Twenty-seven million will be utilized to complete infrastructure improvements supporting the expansion of Ohio Health. This funding leverages a private investment of eighty-nine million and approximately one thousand three hundred and eleven new jobs. Four million is to support our public-private partnership program, or three P as we call it, because that is a lot to say often. This program is a cross-departmental program that helps us fund, manage and coordinate infrastructure improvements that support job creation and leveraging private investment, of which a project like Ohio Health is an example. One point five million is used to support the work of the Next Generation Development Corporation. This corporation helps us acquire property to support our neighborhood level development. And then one million will be used to relocate, relocate utility lines associated with the redevelopment of the North Market Site downtown. Two hundred and fifty thousand is for general economic and community development needs that we identify throughout the year, specifically to support neighborhood-level economic development projects. Additionally, as my colleagues have mentioned, the Department of Development supports the Urban Infrastructure Recovery and Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Fund. Specifically, we engage with the community to help establish the types of projects and priorities that were referenced. We support the work of public service, public utilities, recreation and parks, as well as street scape improvements for our neighborhood commercial revitalization corridors. This concludes our presentation of the budget proposal and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from my colleagues? Okay. And our final presenter before we take our speaker slips is Mr. Paul Rakowski, Deputy Director of the Recreation and Parks Department and in some ways our host today, so thank you.
Thank you Chair Brown, President Harden, President Pro Tem Stenziano, members of council and, and all the great folks that are out here today to come hear about our capital budget. I want to thank George Wilson, who's the center manager for hosting us here today in one of our wonderful community centers that we have, one of twenty-nine buildings that we have. Our overall budget is a little over sixty-nine million and everyone's talked about carryover funding of that amount. We have a little over fifteen million, almost sixteen million in bond cash that we have left over and most of ours is from last year. We don't have much that's multi-year hold over on our cash. We hope to spend that as quickly as possible and get those dollars out into the community. New funding is a little over fifty-three million within our budget. And I have, there's some, back behind us here are some boards that I brought that have the, the location of all of the projects that I'm going to talk about quickly here this morning, as well as some of our trail projects as we keep working towards completing all of our bike trails that we have, our greenway trails. You'll also notice when I go over some of these areas and projects, we have large pots of money that we put out for doing concrete and asphalt repair and to do playground and park improvements throughout our system. So about, you know, we have eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that's out there for hard surface renovation. We have eight hundred thousand that we have for park and, and playground improvements. So you'll hear me address some of those as I go through the, the planning areas. Those will be, we kind of set a time and materials for those contracts, so we'll set up a big lump of money and then we work through that money to try and get as many projects. So those don't necessarily have dollar totals associated right now because we're moving on those contracts, but you will see, and they do make a difference, that when we go out and we fix pathways in the parks and repair the parking lots in the parks and at our, at our center. So in, in the northeast, we have the Adams Community Center. We'll be getting a new lobby, a lobby renovation for a hundred thousand dollars and we've set aside two million dollars in last year's money to begin looking at all of our current rec. centers and to start taking a better, doing a better job of maintaining currently what we have as well as replacing centers in the future. But that million dollars that we put aside to deal with all of the lobby renovations, that's where these, these projects are coming from. So we have Adams Community Center lobby renovation. At the airport golf course, we're beginning a process of naturalizing as much of the areas at our golf courses as we can. So we have eighty-two thousand dollars set aside to, to plant wildflowers and pollinating, you know, for our pollinators out there and, and naturalize as much of our golf courses as we can, which also helps us reduce the amount of fertilizer and chemicals that we would need because we're trying to do that as well across our whole, our, our whole spectrum of parks and, and golf courses. Our trail projects on the Alum Creek Trail, we have easton improvements. There's a small piece of the trail that has been in disrepair that was built by the folks at the soccer organization out there at easton and we're going to go in and repair all of that. It lays low, it gets muddy, it's deteriorating, so we're going to go and repair that for a hundred and eighty thousand. We also have a Johnstown Road East Columbus connector for a five hundred and ten thousand. Harrison Smith Park has some drainage issues, so we're going to put a hundred thousand into that park to fix the drainage issues that we have in the park and, and get the, get the water into the right areas and away from the equipment that's there in the park. And then the Howard Community Center is also going to have its lobby renovated as well, and that'll include replacing the lobby fixture that's out in the front of all of our, our, our community centers, as well as repainting and the whole lobby area and, and sprucing up the, the entryways into the, the center. In the near east, we have asphalt improvements that are going to be occurring all over our structures and at our responsibilities in the near east. Academy Park, the sports courts at Academy Park, we're going to get overlay and color coat of the existing basketball court for twenty-five thousand. At Beatty Park, again with the sports courts, we're going to crack fill in color coat the existing tennis courts, do some fencing extension for a little over forty thousand. The Beatty Community Center will also get its lobby renovated. There'll also be concrete improvements that are going to occur throughout our, our facilities in the near east. We've also set aside money this year for facility demolition. We have a lot of properties that have existing structures on them that are no longer safe and we just want to get rid of those in one fell swoop. So this year, we've set aside money and we want to get out and get rid of all of those structures that should have been taken down a long time ago. At Franklin Park, where you probably, if you're a visitor to Franklin Park, have noticed that the cascades have not been working over the last year or so. We're replacing and we have replaced all of the pumps. They were down in the ground. Our work, you know, our workforce couldn't get in there. It was unsafe. We put in all new pumps. They're above ground now, so the pumps are all working. There are two ponds that are connected by the cascade. Now we're going to switch to the cascade that was, that was leaking, wasn't holding water, so we're going to go and rebuild the cascade this year. And then next year, we'll also look at the lower pond and make sure we may drain that quickly and then re-place betonite and re-line that so, because that, we were having leaks as well. And all of that is fed through a well system when we move water between the two ponds through the cascade. The Adventure Center, which is our center that we have on, at Franklin Park that does our, some of our really special programming for folks with needs, is going to get a one million dollar renovation of its, the exterior of that center. And then the Davis Center that's been sitting closed there, we're going to invest two and a half million into the Davis Center to turn it into a, a shelter that is a redable shelter for folks in the community. And, and that's a really good thing because our shelters that we rent, our closed shelters tend to be a lot more affordable than a lot of the other things that folks can rent out there in the community. So it provides another affordable place for families to hold reunions and weddings and bridal showers and the like. In the Eastmore Walnut Village, we have two acquisition projects for our trails. The Eastmore Green Line, which is an abandoned railroad corridor, we're going to go and acquire that and then we'll turn that into a trail as well. There's an acquisition of Nobixby Parkland in a natural area for eight hundred thousand that we're pursuing as well. Again, asphalt improvements. And then at Barnett Park, playground replacement. We have a great program where the Blue Jackets gave us a half a million dollars to replace playgrounds around all of our, the city and our centers. So this one will be in conjunction with the Blue Jackets. And again, the lobby at Barnett will be, will be renovated as well. And then at Big Walnut Park, we're going to be doing lighting improvements out at the park. Eastland Bryce, again asphalt improvements and facility demolition in that area. Independence Village Park, again with our sports courts, we'll be crack filling all of those and color coding the existing basketball court and putting in new goals. At Navsker Park, we have a playground replacement for sixty thousand. And then again, there's a half-court basketball court at that park. We're going to add another half-court and turn it into a full-court basketball court and add some benching. And then in the southeast, we have the Black Lick Trail. There's one gap left on the Black, Black Lick Trail. We're going to acquire that gap and we're going to build the trail to make sure that we have the Black Lick Trail be a complete trail. And then Gender Road, we have a big piece of land out on Gender Road that's right next to Pickerington Ponds. And we've, it's an un, it's a natural area at this point, undeveloped area. We have a half a million dollars to begin phase one, and I know that's an important issue because it's one of those areas where we lack parkland. So phase one, we'll work on grading and planning the master plan for the park. So we have a half a million for that and then we'll be requesting next year and have the money put aside to do the actual park improvements and we'll work with the community as we always do before we begin park improvements to see what kind of amenities the, the folks want in the park and we'll make sure we get those in there. And unlike a lot of the other, we have some other bigger projects that are coming, but a lot of these you're going to see completed in the current year because a lot of these have already been designed. The money's ready to go out the door. So we have some bigger projects in other areas like in Linden that we're in a design process currently. It'll take us six to nine months, probably nine months at least, to get that new facility and park designed. A lot of this, you will see the money going out. And we also have pots of money that are out there to address things as they come up and we identify them. So these will not be the only projects that occur out in these areas. We'll be doing other, we've allocated some money to our maintenance staff that have had a list of smaller projects, but important projects throughout our system that they want to address. So some of those are not captured here and so you'll, you'll see more than just what I've gone over today. I have maps, I have the list of these projects with the dollar amounts as well, so if anybody wants that when we're finished, come and see me. And I also have my cards here because I know there'll be things that we haven't talked about that might be in these areas that you're interested in, so I definitely want to hear about that as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rakowski. Any questions from my council members? Council President?
Thank you Chair Brown. And really my questions are, first, a comment about a specific project. There wasn't necessarily Wreckin' Parks, but just one of the, the projects presented this afternoon, or this morning. And then my question for Director of Finance before we go into community questions. One project that we talked about this morning in public service was the sidewalk project around schools. And I bring that up to say thank you to both of my colleagues on both sides of, of meeting this project. I think each one of us got to touch in my previous chairmanship of public service, working with Councilmember Brown as Chair of Education, working with Councilmember Remy now as the new Chair of Public Service, and working with the schools, Columbus City Schools. And we have Vice President Mike Cole of Columbus City Schools, and that was a partnership. And I really wanted to say thank you to the departments, but also to just the collaboration to get that done. Literally, Independence High School students came down and presented to us at council and there was part present, part demand and, and, but stayed around the table with us and helped to, to work to get us where we, we are. That, we, we say often that budgets are living documents. They speak to the values and priorities of a community. We heard the priorities of our young people and we were able to work that through and that was because of the leadership of my colleagues on council and the support of the administration. The second, so, and then my question I have, and this would be probably to Director Dan G. from, from Finance. In my previous chairmanship of the Small Minority Business Committee, we, we are very close to rolling out the results, engagement of the disparity study, or at least I know it's coming soon. How does that play at all into this capital budget or does it not in terms of timing, in terms of what potentially we, we would see out of that and, and how we would, we would engage? And the disparity study for folks who aren't, weren't following, we want to make sure, we're looking at our contracting to make sure that the dollars that we put out reflect the diversity of our community and it pertains to women, minorities and contracting. And so I'm eagerly looking, awaiting the results of that study to see how and where we do well, where we need to do better and how that will then impact our, our contracting.
President Harden, members of council and the community, so yes, we are, we are eagerly awaiting the results of that study and obviously we will take our cues from what that study will say about the city's contracting process and either how well we're doing or areas that we need to improve. So obviously when that becomes known and when we, we get that information, have a chance to review it, we obviously work with other departments and I think candidly, the, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion is, is obviously heading that, that up. And so we'll, we'll see what the results of that are and we will, you know, study that and see where areas we can improve if, if that's what that study calls for. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to take speakers now and thank you to those who filled out speaker slips. There, we've gotten seven and we'll take them roughly in the order we received them with the exception being I, I did put our friends from the northwest, seventh, I hope you don't mind. But since we're in our east side hearing, then I'm, I'm going to give those chances, those folks a chance to speak first. So first up, we have Angela Barnes of the Southeast Area Commission, and the microphone is in, in the back there. So if you could state your name and provide your three-minute testimony, that would be wonderful.
Hi, my name is Angela Barnes. I live on Lehman Road in Canal Winchester, which is on my side of the street, a Columbus City property. I'm serviced by the Columbus City Trash Fire Police, et cetera. However, I've been there for fifteen years now. However, I've been there for 15 years now, and I've noticed a very increased amount of crime in the area. Literally, someone walked in my house while I was asleep, and I did not realize one of my doors was unlocked, and stole my purse off my kitchen table. Last weekend, my sister-in-law's car was shot up while sitting in her parking lot in her apartment complex. One of the things that I asked for when I first moved there was the Lehman Road street to be widened and for a traffic light to be put at the end of Lehman Road, which did happen. They did come down and widen it a little, and they repaved it. I did hear our public service person talk about Lehman Road being widened even further, I believe, and repaved again. I'm assuming this is a new repave, because it was just done about five years, six years ago. But at that time, I was told that they were going to put in a center lane. We have a lot of traffic on Lehman Road, and there are a lot of apartments. My question is, do we have, and maybe you have the plan, and now I can see it, a plan that will show Gender Road from Lehman all the way down to Kroger's having a, having a sidewalk, so that these children who are walking around, aren't walking in back of our homes, checking things out, they have a sidewalk to be on. And also, for the community to even have a sidewalk. There are no sidewalks on, on Gender, all the way down. The City of Columbus continues to allow people to build new properties, new apartments, but there's no zoning requirements for them to put in sidewalks as they're building these properties. And I wondered why we're not making them do these things as they're building. If you're going to build a new complex that's going to have, you know, a couple hundred units in it, why not put the sidewalk in then, rather than make us wait? And then, the other thing I wanted to know is when Lehman Road is going to get the sidewalks and, because there's a sidewalk from, I believe it's Meadows, Winchester Meadows, down to Levi Kramer, but then, there's no sidewalk from Levi Kramer on down to the end of the road to Gender. And I'd like to know when that's going to happen.
Leave, Mr. Ortega, if you could take that question.
Thank you, Chair. And to, to the, the audience member, specifically on the sidewalk issue, let me, maybe we could follow up afterwards. I can, I can take your information. I can follow up with you on that, if I could. You know, sidewalk requests are among the most common requests we get out in the public. As far as that particular area, maybe we could follow up afterwards. I can take some information and follow up with you, if that's okay. Your other question on the sidewalks, as far as development?
... down to Kroger's, or whatever.
Right.
It's something we did to make people feel comfortable. It's not one set and done. It's been what's going on every day, and we're not getting sidewalks.
Right, right. As far as that issue, I don't, perhaps I-
And if we could follow up, thank you.
I think we need to clarify that, because in most situations sidewalks are required. So, we would just need to understand what's going on in, on that road particularly, or what they're requesting, that is, that it's not happening. So, I'd be happy to give you my card afterwards.
For those who couldn't hear the beginning of her answer, Deputy Director Jones said in most situations sidewalks are required. So, we're going to follow up on the specifics of what's happening and the examples that you, that you cited, Ms. Jones, or Ms. Barnes. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Jimmy Justice. Go ahead. The microphone's right behind you, sir.
My name is Jimmy Justice. I'm from the Wagner Corridor, which is Wagner Road, about a quarter of a mile from the Licken County line. Thank you all for being here. Yesterday, in the Dispatch, there was an article about Nationwide Children's Hospital, they're on Parsons Avenue, going to revitalize the area around it, the city and other organizations. Now, that, the revitalized area is going to be from Parsons to Alum Creek Drive, from Freiburg up to Main Street. Now, when you say revitalization, that means new folks moving in, and other folks are going to be moving out. And my concern is the folks moving out. Because if you take the center of that area, that between Freiburg and Parsons, that general area, it is going to be East Columbus Street and Lockburn Road. If you take a two-mile radius, from yesterday, one year back, in that area, there was 20 And I've got a list. I know I don't have time. I'll skim over it. Aggravated assault, that is people being attacked with a weapon. There was 134 of them. Regular assaults, just people attacking somebody, was 1,486 from April the 6th, 2018, back to April the 6th, 2017, one year. Vehicle thefts was 521. Burglaries from vehicles was 775. Drug offenses, 279. Vandalism, 1,111. Vandalism, and that number, I think, leans toward gangs. So, if you're going to, if you're, if you're going to revitalize that area, does anybody have any suggestions at all of where these folks that are doing this are going to be leaving?
Is that the end of your question? You have 30 seconds. I just don't want to cut you off.
Pardon?
I was just asking if that's the end of your question. You have 30 seconds, and I didn't want to cut you off.
Oh, no. No, no. Does anybody have, tell me where these folks are going to be leaving? And, and where they're going to move to? What are we going to do when the crime goes up in our area, but the area around the hospital there is revitalized?
Thank you, sir.
And if I could make a suggestion, you all need another chair over there. I mean, for the, the board, it should be the Director of Unintended Consequences. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the levity at the end there. So, I, I know that in Nationwide Children's Plan for the area, a lot of their investments, because this isn't new, you know, they have been trying to invest in the area surrounding their hospital. A lot of their investments really deliberately aim not to gentrify as they revitalize. I don't think we should take it as a foregone conclusion that it's impossible to revitalize without causing, you know, gentrification and just pushing problems out to other neighborhoods. They've done really creative ways of, you know, making homeownership and rentership affordable, so that it's about lifting up the standards and not, not simply displacing. And, and I, for one, remain optimistic, because that is their approach. I don't know if Deputy Director Jones has any further information about that plan, just because I know they work closely with the department in, in putting it together. So, please feel free to offer comment on it now, or of course, we can have more, more follow-up about it. But I wanted to give you that chance.
I would be happy to have a more detailed conversation offline, so that we don't take up all the question time. But what I would say is the study area that was highlighted in the story yesterday was specific to a visiting panel that was in town with the Urban Land Institute to take a look at that area. And the question that we posed to them specifically was, how do we improve the neighborhood to serve the residents who are both moving in and who remain there? So, as you mentioned, Chair Brown, the goal is not displacement at all. And honestly, to use it as a way to improve the city at large, and so that we can combat displacement throughout the City of Columbus. So, it really, for Nationwide Children's Hospital, will be, as you said, their partnership continuing the way it has been, very intentional. It is not necessarily a new effort that is specific to only those boundaries. It was just a study area that the Urban Land Institute, excuse me, was looking at.
Thank you.
And I would, I just also want to add that, you know, we have to attack crime in, in different ways. And some of the ways that you attack crime is, is going after the root causes of it, which are poverty. And so, you know, and you don't always see that addressed in a capital budget. A lot of those dollars are usually in our, the operating expenses, where we're working with communities, working with, with folks. We obviously have work to do in terms of community safety. We have the best, best police force. You have an awesome CLO officer. And so, we look forward to working with you, working with the community, make sure that people can feel safe, but also, we address those real roots of violence. So, thank you for your question.
Can I talk to you afterwards?
We'd like, we'd like to make sure we get through all. We now have, I think, 10 slips, so we will, we can talk to you afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. But it's, it's important not to, not to give up on an area, you know, because of its high crime and say, well, we don't want to push this out somewhere else, so we can just leave it alone in this area, right? It's about, and that's the whole point of the ULI study, is to try to tackle that very complex question of how do we revitalize without displacing? How do we improve without simply moving problems? Next, we have Cynthia Moore, or maybe Morey. Morey, I apologize. You have three minutes.
Good morning. This is my first time, so I'm a little nervous, too. I moved off Chatterton between Nobixby and Gender. I built my first home over there, be 20 years in June. I was a brand spanking new firefighter at the time, Columbus Fire, and I'm now retired. And it's, it's troubling me to see what's happening to my area. The gunshots, and the assaults, and the breaking into vehicles, and breaking into homes. And I used to watch the credit reports that I'd get on the email, and it was all happening around me. It was like I was in this little pocket. And now, it has just crept closer and closer and closer. And it concerns me, that when I moved here, not only was it thriving, but there were just housing tracts going up all around us, and shopping centers going up all around us, and we had the mall. And we had that whole center off Gender that was the Best Buy and the Meyer and all of that, that I'm so very glad to see that somebody's starting to move back into those areas. Now, the mall is gone, and all those stores that were across from it, the Staples and the Coles. My worry is that, when I watch the news, and I love Columbus, when I watch the news and I see areas get so run down, that it becomes the big new project, like the Near East Side. And then, we see all the buildings getting refurbished, and it was so run down. And now, we're seeing it's, it's the hilltop, the Franklington area. I don't want my area to have to get down there that far, you know? We don't need to get down there, where we have all these boarded up houses and, and crime is running rampant. We don't have to get down that far before, we need to start filling up those buildings again. Okay? So, that's just, I just want to put that out there. Specifically, my area there along Chatterton, who does the grass along there? We can't get people to do it all the time by ourselves. Isn't it the city that's supposed to take care of it? This has been getting an ongoing thing. I've been there 20 years in June. We pick up the trash. We take care of the beds along there. But who's supposed to take care of that grass, where it literally gets this high? And there's so much trash that we walk through there, and we pick up large, large bags, like 10 bags, just in that one-mile area. And I can't get an answer, because we're right on that edge there. It's Chatterton, which is Refugee, and at Nobixby, it becomes Chatterton, and it becomes Refugee again at Gender. Other thing I wanted to say is, is this our emergency shelter? Is this for this area? I was trying to put together a tornado kit. I grew up in Southern California, so I'm not real familiar with tornado kits. But it said to locate your shelter, this is my first time here, so I was wondering, is this our shelter? Where is my police substation? I don't know where that is either. Okay. Okay, great. Let's see. And with the recycling, I was so very happy that we started the recycling program back quite a few years now. It still is only every two weeks. Most of us can handle that. But we used to always also have the larger boxes flattened out on the side, like next to the containers. And they always would take them, pick them up. But now, I'm not seeing them manned. Now, they just have the arms coming out, and nobody's picking those up. And with our recycling bins coming every two weeks, they're full. We don't have any place to put those. We can't break them down all the way. So, I called downtown. Some said they don't do that anymore. Some said it depends on the area. And one guy said it depends on if, if enough people report to work that day, if they can man the trucks. So, I mean, I'm in, I'm on Retriever Road. They call it the Dog Pound, because it's all dog names. I live on Jack Russell, but it's Retriever and Beagle and Jack Russell. It's all off Chatterton. They just stopped-
Do you want to ask that you finish up? Because we're a little, we're over the three minutes. But was there, is there another piece after recycling?
No, just who does the grass? What's the situation with the recycling? Are they picking the stuff up that's not in the bins anymore? And if anybody needs help over on my end, getting things organized, I'm retired now, so I'd be glad to help. My name's Cindy Moore. You can reach me afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your service to our city as well. Thank you. Councilmember Verini, you said you wanted to say, mention something about the recycling.
Well, a whole variety-
Public service.
A whole variety of things that you mentioned there are, are under my purview as Chair of Environment and Public Service. You know, those things are concerns that we'll talk to you more offline. We're more than happy to, to address some of those things. But, you know, in the community, as a community leader for as long as I was, we did, we had similar concerns along 161. We developed our own task force to supplement the mowing. I'm not suggesting that everybody do that. That's, that was, it's a, it's a daunting task to do that from a community perspective. But sometimes, with limited resources, where, where, there's a mowing schedule that doesn't, does not meet the standards of the community. But that requires dollars to increase those, those mowing, you know, occurrences and, and money that we would have to take from other places in order to accomplish that. So, sometimes, it's a delicate balance. But I did want to comment just a little bit on Hamilton Road, because, you know, I sat over Morris Road and, and what we did up there in redeveloping when the mall went out in You know, I, I think, I'm, I'm very pleased to see the commitment and the streetscape commitment that we're going to be doing on Hamilton Road from, from 70 down to Refugee. Though, that, that is kind of, that, that's extremely important for revitalization efforts. And really was the catalyst that, that started Morris Road back to something of viability. So, I, I would be very encouraged if you lived, if you live around there, although a lot of places have left. This is the, this is really the first step to revitalizing the area. And so, if, if we weren't making that investment in there, it would be discouraging, given that everything that's happened. But, but the commitment that we're making down there in that streetscape project is, is really key to revitalizing that area. And so, I'm very hopeful for the future down there.
Thank you, Councilmember. And specifically on the mowing schedule, if, since Director Ortega, if you could follow up on the exact mowing schedule for the stretch of road that Ms. Morey was talking about, so she knows. And, and the recycling piece, you can speak to it. I, it's definitely, I'll just highlight overall, recycling does happen every two weeks. I don't know about the change between cardboard boxes and, and what's contained in the blue bin. Mr. Ortega, if you can follow up about that. But recycling is free to households in the City of Columbus, which is, I will say, from prior chairship of the Environment Committee, I learned a lot about what's offered in cities. It is unique to have free recycling for our residents. And that's the way that the program was put together when it was unveiled. It is also, happens to be one of the reasons why we can afford, only afford to do it every two weeks, because the service is free. Last year- Last year... Well, let's try to get you one answer. Mr. Ortega, if you can work on getting her the answer on the cardboard boxes, that would be great. We'd like you to have one answer. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Bonnie Drought.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I live in Three Rivers. It's off of Williams Road, between Reichert Ford and 33. We had our streets, half of our streets repaved in 2013. At that time, it was very shoddy work, and we were told that we got what was left of the money. So, my question is, is each neighborhood given a designated amount for road repair? Or is it used as needed, and the last neighborhood gets what's left? And my second question is, Elk Run Park is at the end of Hendron Road, at 3600 Hendron Road. We've been dealing now with a broken drainage tile that drains the water to Big Walnut Creek. And we have been waiting since they redid our park for a connection to the Black Lick Trail. And I would like to know if that is in process for this year? And my third is, we're in Precinct 20. It is a very large precinct, and I want to know if we're going to get any more police for that precinct. It is needed badly.
Thank you so much. So, I think there's three departments that touch on the answers to your question. First, how is resurfacing determined? Mr. Ortega, if you're able to provide an answer now, please do. If it requires some follow-up, we can facilitate that, too.
Thank you for that question. In terms of the resurfacing dollars, typically, what happens is, of course, the city tries to spread a pavement program throughout the city. This is funding dependent. But in terms of how the pavement program gets determined year to year, it's kind of a combination of factors. Each road is assigned what's called a condition number, a rating, basically, which describes the condition of the road. There are street maintenance investigators, excuse me, that go out and inspect the roads that also provide additional feedback. You know, and again, we try to spread it throughout, you know, the city, so that each part of the city sees a pavement repayment program. As to the question as to whether each neighborhood has a designated amount, I don't know that that's the case. I mean, it is dependent upon funding overall, but those are some of the factors by which roads are determined to have, be on the resurfacing list, or for other treatments such as crack seal, slurry seal, which is more of a maintenance, you know, sort of activity. But we can follow up offline on the other question you mentioned about your experience with the previous thing, but that's, in general, how that works.
Thank you. And then, two questions related to parks, Mr. Rakowski. The Black Rick Trail and Elk Run Park, I don't know if you have thoughts immediately. Again, sometimes, this does require the directors here being able to get the information and follow up, so I defer to you.
I'll just supply my card, and then, we'll make sure if there's a broken tile at a culvert or something, yeah, we'll... But I'll give you my card. I can check up on where we're at in the process of getting it fixed. And I don't recognize the trail for the park, but I know now that we've completed the main sections of the trail, our focus is going to be on connecting neighborhoods with lateral connections to the trails, and we are doing that for parks. So, we'll, we can talk as soon as we're done here, and then, I'll make sure I call you back next week and get you some answers.
Thank you. And then, the last piece is not capital budget, more operating budget focused, but it's about officers in Precinct 20. Deputy Director Stewart, if you're able to speak to that.
Yes, ma'am. I do know that there have been announced class increases in police sizes, or size of police classes. Two additional classes, or two classes this year, and then, twenty additional officers that were, will be added to those amounts. Where they'll be assigned, I don't know yet. We're talking about training and, you know, getting them out there. Exactly where they'll be put, I don't know. But I can check into that for you. We have talked many times before. You've got my number, so go free to call.
This is just a point, just so that council can be kept abreast of what the follow-up is. Can I ask that one of our members of our Community Affairs Engagement Team track all of our speakers, and report back to all of our council members on what the follow-up is from the departments?
Next, we have Marion Harris, former State Rep Marion Harris.
Chair Brown, Council President Shannon. My name's Marion Harris, and I'm here representing the Southeast Area Commission. A number of the issues that I was going, that I've been jotting notes about have been addressed, so I won't belabor the point. One is, hopefully, a simple one for Mr. Ortega, and that is, I'm delighted that Independence High School is getting sidewalks. I know how hard those kids have worked. I've worked with them on other projects. They're just great. Do you know where those sidewalks are? Are they on Refugee, or are they on No Bixby? Do you know? Or is that something you need to get back to me on, or what?
Let's follow up on that. I mean, I've got, you know, the general project details, but specific locations, I can follow with you on that.
Yeah, I'd love to know where those sidewalks are, because they need them all over, so I just was curious.
Yes, ma'am.
The other one for Department of Development, for Ms. Jones, Bryce Road. We've talked about Hamilton Road, but Bryce Road is a desert. Thank heavens for the Honda dealer out there who took over the old Meyer store. But there's an area of big box stores that have been vacant for ten, fifteen years. And I know when I was a State Rep, I tried to work with the city to do something about them. I see more stores closing on the east side of Bryce Road. I wondered if there's anything in the budget that is focused on the development along Bryce Road?
I don't have anything specifically. What I will do is make sure and get your phone number, so I can have you follow up with our Economic Development side of the house, so I'm the Community Development side of the house. What I will say is, I think, everybody in the Department of Development recognizes in our outer ring commercial corridors, that there is a struggle with retaining retail, and that as big box moves, the challenge for reutilizing and repurposing those storefronts. So, I know that Bryce Road is always on our radar, as well as Eastland, but I will make sure that we get your information to our Economic Development Team to more accurately respond.
Great. I appreciate that. And the last question I had was for Parks and Rec. Is there anything being done, any kind of study or anything, looking at a rec center in that far east, No Bixby Refugee Road, Nafsker Park, that area? You know, those kids need someplace to go, and there isn't any place for them to go.
I will make a note to do that, and we will put it on our list of future rec centers where we do have some areas. I'll have to look and see how that area falls in, in regard to usage, and what we already have. I don't know how close we're talking to the center here, but it's something I'm willing to put on the list.
Kids from Independence High School can't get here.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, unless they're driving, and it's away. So, that would be great if we could do something.
Sure.
And the only thing I'd ask, again, the police staffing in our area, I mean, I live in the Walnut Heights subdivision, and there's more and more and more crime, car break-ins, and we're told that police can't respond to car break-ins, because there's just not enough manpower. They just can't, they can't do it. Just report it. And you've answered that question, and I appreciate that, and just hope we can get more folks going into law enforcement, and get some more folks in our district. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll also make sure you have my contact information, and I can follow up with you.
Well, I work with Officer Poole, so, you know...
Then, I'm through.
I go right to the source there.
Yeah, Poole is a phenomenal resource over there. Thanks for making me look bad again, Jim.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. This is really great of you all to be here on a Saturday morning. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Representative Harris. Thank you for being here, and for your questions. And I think I'm superfluous, because you knew exactly who to direct all of your questions, too. So, we will move on to the next speaker. Jennifer Chamberlain, of the Far East Area Commission.
I'm Barbara Riley. I live in Wagner Corridor. And Jennifer asked me to speak for her, because she had to leave.
Jennifer.
Pardon me?
I was thinking, you're not Jennifer.
Jennifer is the Chair of the Far East Area Commission, and she wanted to know if there's anyone here who knows when our fire station that is to be built on Wagner Road was first a budget item?
Yes. They're looking to break ground on that this fall.
No, I want to know when it was first a budget item. If anyone knows, it's here today.
Funded? Is that what you're asking? When the first allocation went to it?
When it was first a budget item, yes. I know, but I just want to know if anybody here knows.
2006.
That was Jennifer's question.
Bonds originally were sold in 2006, and then, there was a design done. Of course, the land was acquired, and then...
What year?
2006.
Six.
2006. And then, there was a recession.
It became a budget item in 2006?
Right.
And every year, the money went somewhere else, and we sat there, and we have nothing.
There was a recession that we all went through, the longest since the Great Depression. So, there were not funding for firefighters to go in that station. Those funds, at that time, were used to buy twenty EMS vehicles and other fire apparatus. And then, coming out of that recovery, it got, it remained in the capital plan, and then, there had to be an upgrade to the design, because it'd been so long since the original...
Twelve years.
Since the original design. Well, you asked me if I knew, so...
Do you have any idea? Can you give me an answer today as to when it's going to be, the ground's going to be broken, is going to be started?
The, I think Assistant Director Stewart did mention that in his remarks, that it is the intent to break ground. Hopefully, this year, they're completing design for that, and hopefully, they will be going out for bid. The reason for the current delay is that we were asked by the Division of Fire to look at increasing the HVAC system in order to make it more palatable for them to be in due to the recent initiative by FIRE on cancer in firefighters. So, we are upgrading the station for that, and it's our hope we break ground this year.
And any idea of when? Is it going to be yet this spring, summer, fall?
I don't have, we can see if we have a firm date for that for you, but I know that's to go out to bid very soon.
All right. And if someone would please get in touch with Jennifer and give her those answers then? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for conveying her question, and I hear your frustration in your voice. Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Santuomo from the Eastmore Civic Association. Sure.
So, first, Councilwoman Brown, thank you so much for holding this forum for us. I think some of us probably attended the mayor's neighborhood conversation with the anticipation of being able to have this opportunity, and we didn't have it there. So, thank you so much for holding this forum. I got involved in the east side, because I had grown up here, and I realized the east side's been neglected for a very long time. And this poster board, right here, where it shows where all of the dollars are going all around the city, it pretty much makes what we on the east side feel, it proves it. We are the least funded area. And by no means, I mean, downtown has this other sliver, but we are much more dense, we're much more vast, and we don't have any money. It's not coming to us. So, I think for all of us in this room, it's very frustrating to see this, especially when, I get the west side, that the west side needs a lot of money, because it has been neglected, much like the east side, for a very long time. But when you look at this number going to the north side, going up and down High Street, Indianola Avenue, all of these projects that have all been done within the past ten, fifteen years, and we have the most dangerous intersection, James and Broad, which isn't even on your capital improvement budget to fix over the next six years, yet we had seven people die on James Road in the past three years from traffic accidents, and this isn't even on the radar. It's very frustrating. So, my question is, is if we're not here, how do we get here? How are these dollars distributed? And how do we, as east side leaders, get on your radar so that this doesn't happen next time? Because it's really unacceptable.
Thank you. Specifically, your question about James and Broad being the most dangerous intersection in the city, I am curious why, given those numbers, you know, there aren't, I don't know, who would, you know, best be able to speak to that example? But given those numbers, I know that when we prioritize projects, we try to look at, you know, not just how trafficked something is, so how well-worn the roads are, but also safety. That's part of how we prioritize our sidewalk budgets. You know, are there pedestrian accidents? So, can you shed a little bit of light on the roadway piece of how we prioritize, you know, within that four hundred and odd million that's kind of beyond the water and sewer upgrades, where things are going? Yeah, and Mr. Ortega, if you can, it would be great to hear that, just how the department does. And I also know that the department has a long list of priorities that can't get funded every single year, so I know that a lot of these are on your radar, but I'm just curious if you can shed a little bit more light onto that.
Thank you for that question. I mean, in terms of, you know, the spreading of funding around to different projects, of course, you know, safety, you know, is among the things that are looked at, community input in terms of Requesting 311 and other factors. You mentioned Broad and James. I'd have to get with you specifically about some of the timing of those things, but we do have big projects such as, you know, Main and McNaughton, James and Livingston, and others. But, you know, we try to spread, there is an attempt to spread things throughout the city in a manner, again, taking into account safety matters, funding opportunities. Some of these projects are also leveraged projects that require funding from other sources. So, I hope that addresses that a little bit. I could follow up with you as well, so...
Yeah. I think that the frustration is, is that, you know, it hit number one in the state on a federal level. In January, there was an article published that we're number one in the state. But it has been decades, the most, either one or two, the most dangerous intersection from Morpsy. So, I understand 311, and I've been told that by city council before. I think that the frustration is, is that eventually, when you go 311, 311, 311, and nothing happens, the neighbors are not, you know, we're not apt to, our neighbors aren't going to report anything. But if you just look at the data, it is so clear cut. So, for that to be missed in a budget like this is, it's frustrating for eastsiders. And I know that that's not the only issue, but I know that it's a major issue. It's, you know, a major corridor for us, so...
One thing, I'm curious if we can get either from finance or service and follow up to us, is whether we know what that project would cost to improve safety at that intersection? If we don't, that should be something we work on immediately. I'm sure it is expensive, and I'm sure it's not a matter of just moving some money around this year, but we should know, given the data, what this project would cost.
We can follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Rimi?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Brown. Michelle, you know, we've been having some conversations about this, and I did ask the director to set up a meeting so that we can actually tour... tour out there, and we will be doing that. I did hear, saw the emails, so we will be reaching out to you to schedule that.
Thank you.
I agree with my colleague that, you know, this is a priority and it should be a priority. And we'll make sure, we'll get back to you. I'll ask the Director just to put those numbers together for us as far as what it looks like to do things immediately, and then also what maybe some of the longer-term costs associated, so we can make it a priority. But we hear you. We're working towards it.
Appreciate it. And then as far as future, how do we fix this as a community on the East Side? I mean, we have, it's got to be at least 150, 200,000 of Columbus's residents on the East Side. Why, where do those numbers come from? Where did our percentage come from?
The percentage is a result of each of the departments going through their prioritization and submitting them to the Department of Finance. And, you know, this is the mayor's proposed budget that reflects those prioritizations. So unfortunately, there's not kind of one, you know, symptom to assign it to. It's, but the, one of the reasons that we ask, and every year Finance produces these documents, is that we need visual representation of how priorities fall. And it is yet another reminder that we need to focus on this. That's not a great answer, I will admit that. But, you know, I do think that that's the reality of the process. And Council President.
And I would just say, and this is not to make any excuses, I mean, when you see a graph, but one thing, some, so some projects can skew what that looks like because public utilities, for instance, can do one project on a side of town and it'd be a couple hundred million dollar, or a hundred million dollar, literally a hundred million dollar project. And so what I would be really interested in, in working with you and everyone else, is, you know, every year we work on a CIP, a Capital Improvement Plan, which spreads over five years, six years. And I think that that is probably, that is a good engagement point for us as a community and a council to have, so that we can know, work through, and make sure that as we plan out even bigger projects, that we're doing that in coordination and by direction of our community leaders.
Well, I think we're ready to work with you if you're willing to work with us.
Is there a way that we could get the same type of breakdown, like going back? Like, okay, here's the scene, because I'm seeing it here, because I had to have a chance to look at it. I mean, we all know, when the north went south and then all money was going there. And then the west is all of the news now and everything's going to revamp and anything can switch on. And then we see that there. I'm curious, are the last all those areas almost done? So we can sort of concentrate on us now?
I think we, it would be good to get a visual representation of past years and also to understand, the Council President's point was a very good one about how sometimes a large project, which actually affects the entire city, happens to occur in one part of the city and therefore skews overall numbers. And when you think about that 557 million that is underground, that is feeding the whole city, that goes through utilities, it can happen. So we-
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
To potentially, I mean, utilities are utilities and it's wonderful that our city is set up to fund the utilities, but could we possibly get a look at that, a look at this minus the utilities? Because the utilities, obviously, that's money that needs to happen. And, you know, when you're talking sewer, I actually come from a ditch digger's family. So when you start talking storm sewers, I get the cost of that and what that entails.
And EPA requirements.
But if you take that out, it would give us more of a community snapshot of what's actually getting invested in the communities that isn't infrastructure-based.
Yeah.
To that level.
That's a great request. And Mr. Giangardella, do you think we could work on that, sort of minus the 557?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the, what we've done in the past. Obviously, we have some breakdowns citywide and then by planning area, which isn't always by neighborhood association. But let's take a look at it and see what we can come up with for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Santuomo. And next, we have, I appear to have lost two. Where'd those go? I know we have Mr. Cole. You can come on up. Yep, Michael Cole from Columbus City School Board Member. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for hosting this. Thank you so much for the partnership that we have between both of our political subdivisions, our entities. We've been able to do quite a number of things over the years, and they're focused on safety. Just recently, in fact, with Department of Public Safety, these call-ins for gun attacks of our students and our staff. We've been very vigilant. So thank you so much for that support. And again, for the sidewalk piece. I have just two questions. I'm a resident also of the Far East here in Laurel Canyon. We have a very serious water sewage issue in that area. Water runoff is incredibly tremendous in my neighborhood. Most of my neighbors have to have steel beams in the basement. We've had to make, we've had to make our own capital improvements to our homes because of this design of our neighborhood that as we, as these communities grow and age, sometimes we don't deal with the infrastructure along the way. I'd like to know if this is prioritized in your development plans and your capital improvement plans, to look specifically at Laurel Canyon, that kind of McNauton Road area between Broad and Main. Those neighborhoods over there are dealing with serious water issues. My second piece is consideration moving forward, particularly for recreations and parks. One of the things I really vehemently asked our previous superintendent, Dr. Dan Good, to do was engage in conversation with the City of Columbus about multi-use of our school facilities. How do we look at communities that do not have recreation centers and open our doors for school district buildings to be possibly used for that purpose? I love as we move forward and you guys continue to have that conversation, that you're looking at us as a viable opportunity and engaging in dialogue with us on that. I don't know if it's happened yet or not, but I'd love to get some feedback on that as well. And I'm available to work as vigilantly as I can with you to make that happen.
I love that suggestion. And thank you. What? Yeah, Councilmember Remy?
Vice Chair, or Vice President Cole, this is something that I also was working on in the Northland area. I think that there's a number of us on council that are committed to looking at that. You know, I had Steve Ives out, the CEO and President of the Y, looking at what type of programming they could provide by using some of our third parties so that at four o'clock, when a principal leaves, they hand the key off to Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, Recs and Parks, so that programming can be provided. Because we don't need to build a lot of brick and mortar when we have the schools that are available all throughout the city to be, you know, to exchange. So we really need to do partnerships like that within the City of Columbus, like they're doing in other parts of the country. So I know Director Collins is working on this and I know that they're heavily engaged with Steve Ives right now to talk about some of these opportunities because I know that your willingness and the Board's willingness to allow the public use, the people's use of the schools is paramount. So we'll continue that discussion. Hopefully we'll have some things to talk about soon.
Thank you so much. And that means that the investment then is operating instead of the, you know, the huge capital that is needed at the beginning to build a whole new center. So thank you. And if you don't mind, I will ask that Mr. Lee follows up with you directly about Laurel Canyon, just out of respect of everyone's time. Is that all right, Mr. Lee? Thank you. And then finally, we have our final speaker slip from Ms. Ellen Carol Jones of the Northwest Columbus Blues. Thank you.
I'm from the Columbus Northwest area. And the Columbus Parks and Recreation and its 2014 master plan stated that North Columbus is last or next to last among five study areas in all major recreation and park resource metrics, and recommended that there be an additional 170 acres of community parks. And as I'm sure every member of council is aware, there is the opportunity to, for the city to purchase the 57.8 acres that are across from Don Scott Airfield, to make it into a park, a large community park and a community hub with an opportunity center. And I want to point out that although Northwest Columbus isn't in the north with that big green area, nonetheless, Northwest Columbus itself is underserved. There's no library, there's no community center, there's no senior center, there's no youth center, there's no cop kiosk for the neighborhood. There's no place for the neighborhood to even construct itself as a neighborhood. And the development of the area was incredibly haphazard. I grew up in that area and now I moved back in 1993. And it's just not even set up as a neighborhood. And so what we're trying to do is create a community and make it into a neighborhood through the community park. And developing the site would coincide with Mayor Ginther's plans to create neighborhoods and to strengthen neighborhoods. It's next to Dublin Schools Elementary School that is willing to work with City Council in coming up with the money to buy the land. And so I asked City Council to support the really strong efforts of Tony Collins and Parks and Recreation in his negotiations with Ohio State to try to get this last parcel of land that's available in the area for community, a large community park and an opportunity center. It's desperately needed. And it would be everything for the community. And if we don't have that, there will be no other chance to have anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones. And we will continue to stay in touch on the opportunity. We know that it's unique and we know that it's right now. So thank you. Thank you so much. With that, we have made it through all of our speakers and we have a lot of follow-up to do. So I appreciate the Council President's suggestion to our panel of department representatives to please keep community engagement abreast of your follow-up so that council knows, so that council, whoops, so that council knows what's occurring and follow-up to these hearings. I really appreciate, we all really appreciate the honest and earnest questions that we get. And we appreciate you all attending here today. There are a lot of easels set up here, so you can feel free to peruse whatever you didn't get a chance to really take a look at before. And we would be happy to take follow-up questions. If you want to email any follow-up questions, my email is ecbrown@columbus.gov, E.C. Brown. So please feel free to continue the conversation. I will repeat that we are looking at first reading at City Council for Monday, April 16th, and second reading for Monday, April 23rd. I am going to point out, because I have a baby who's due in eight days, that Councilmember Remy is Vice Chair of Finance. And at some point in this whole process, I will go into labor. So hopefully not in one of these meetings. But Councilmember Remy as Vice Chair will be, of course, point on everything at that juncture. I want to give my colleagues a chance to say anything else?
Just shout out the next one.
Yep. And, no, no, that's fine. As a reminder, we have three more, April 10th, April 11th, and April 14th. April 10th will be in Marion Franklin Community Center. April 11th will be Glenwood Community Center. April 14th will be Linden Community Center. And again, we're going to go into detail on each of the planning areas incorporated by those budget hearings, similar to how we did in this one. Although, of course, you are all welcome at any of them to continue to carry the East Side flag. And really, in closing, I just want to thank our area commission members who are here. There are several of you. And area commission duties are intense, they're demanding, they're fairly thankless. So thank you for doing what you do all year and for being here and talking about your communities. I want to thank the staff of the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department, including Center Manager George Wilson and all the other staff who is here today. CLO Officer Poole, thank you for being here and for what you do on a daily basis. And then I do want to thank Mayor Ginther and Auditor Kilgore. As you know, the auditor is an integral part of any bond or any capital budget because of the bond sale that she and her team put together. So, and the mayor proposes the budget, so we're very thankful for their leadership. To Finance and Management, Director Joe Lombardi, Deputy Director Dan Giangardella. I want to thank Rob Newman and Kyle Seaverhart who are here. And just do an enormous amount to get this capital budget every single year. It's pretty amazing that there's only two of you. I'm wondering if you're hiding others in your pockets. And then I'd really like to thank the staff of City Council who helped make this hearing possible. There actually is a lot that goes into planning and making sure we can pull this off on a Saturday. So Matt Erickson, thank you for your work on the budget. Erin Gibbons, Nancy Sully, Stanley Gates, and the rest of City Council's community engagement team. And with that, I-
I think we just got a couple more thank yous.
Oh, okay. More thank yous. Oh, and I'm sorry, I need to thank my team, Kelsey Ellingson and James Carmin, who have just been working really, really hard to do all four of these.
I'm just going to echo what she said, not to go through the list of people, but thank you for coming out. This is, I think we all sit back here and we learn things every day about, you know, your concerns. It helps to establish our priorities, to hear, you know, what's important to you. And everybody has unique needs throughout the city. So it's very nice to hear, even though they can be very big frustrations for you, we do take them to heart. We do look into them and we do try to find ways to help solve these issues. So keep coming and keep talking to us at any of these meetings or reach out to us at any time. We can't stress enough that we're all here to serve and work with each one of you. So thank you again.
And just the final thank you. I want to thank really all of my colleagues on council. Each member of council advocated for pieces and portions of this budget. Worked with administration, from Councilmember Page to Councilmember Mitch Brown to Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, of course, President Protem Stenziano, Councilmember Remy. But, and it was all led by our new chairwoman of the Finance Committee. And she really did engage and push for these community meetings. And I am very, very pleased that we did this. So thank you, Madam Chair.
And with that, enjoy your weekends. Thank you.